Call the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of October 21st, 2013 to order with a moment of silence, meditation, and a shoot to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first up on the agenda is a consent agenda. Is there a motion?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Next up, first public forum.
Good evening, all. Thomas Buck, 11 Sherwood Street, Asherway. Um, as you know, I signed up for the Charter Review Commission. One of the requests that I would have for that commission, whoever you decide to place on it, um, I would wish that the town council put it on their agenda and discuss the sections of the charter because you people work with it constantly and give us, give whoever you pick for that, uh, commission some kind of guidance as to what you have come across in your, um, daily work with the charter that needs to be looked at. Um, so we can pinpoint, or they can pinpoint those areas and maybe your recommendations and stuff like that. Um, just but people who don't use the charter, it's, that's probably why we have different issues that we, we have had over the course of time. So I would just request that the town council put that on an agenda and then, and then make a list of recommendations to the commission.
Yes, or, um, or it might be that we decide to write all our items down on paper and, you know, before the meeting or submit them, but...
Yeah, anything to give the commission, uh, some kind of guidance as to what, because you don't want things messed around with things that are working.
Mm-hmm.
And things that are giving into town problems, those are the basic ones that you need to have addressed.
One of the ideas we had, well, there were two ideas. One is to, we asked, we talked to Bill, the manager, and asked him if he could have staff, the department heads, um, write down any, any of their particular issues because they certainly know some of them in some departments more than others. And the, um, the other idea that we had was to prioritize. And I think the council could look at all of those items and then, because the charter commission, they're, to go from page one to the end, we might, we might suggest that there are items that they could get to first.
Right.
And that might be more important in our mind. And they could resolve those issues and deal with them and we could move forward with it, and then they could go back and do some more work. It doesn't have to be to the end.
Well, I would think that you'd want it done in one shot because, um, once the commission ends, I think it's a one-year thing, if I remember correctly.
Well, not necessarily.
And then it's five years before it can be looked at again?
I don't think there's a time limit.
I don't think there's a time.
There wasn't a time limit. For some reason, I thought there was every five years it had to be.
Well, five-year thing is right, but, but the commission could take longer than a year.
Oh, okay. All right, so that part could be longer, okay.
And one of the things we had talked about is trying to see if there were some really crucial ones that they can handle, get their teeth in, get it solved, let us pass those and move on, so that we don't have to do everything at the end where it becomes this massive document that everybody has too many arguments on. Let's take a piece, solve it, move on to the next one. That way, the charter becomes an evolving live document for the year.
Exactly, exactly. It's a live document.
And you feel like you get something accomplished, not just hanging and hanging.
Well, like I said, the biggest thing is just giving the commission some kind of guidance as to where, um, we're heading on, or whoever's heading on that issue.
Might be a, maybe a joint meeting at later date.
Oh, yeah.
To kick it off or something.
Yeah, something.
And the other thing is, um, I would request that, uh, all, when you appoint these people, if we could send out, um, if the council or town clerk would send out copies of the charter to the people so they have it right off the bat.
Mm-hmm. So they start to review.
You get an awful demand there.
Hey, tell you what, we'll hand it out at the interview. That might be best. If they put their name in, they're serious, give it to them at the interview.
There you go.
Yeah.
Because they can still come to the, the meetings are open, so they can still come, and if they're not actually on the commission, I mean, they can still, um, attend the meetings because it's not a closed meeting, so.
Right.
You're right, that's a good idea. Just hand it out then. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you, they do.
I'm going, head to Canada. See ya.
Oh, have fun. Don't forget to turn your vehicle around and come back.
See how it is. How you doing, your wife, Tom? Say again.
Take it easy, eh?
Anyone else for public forum? Nope. Um, council president's report, just a reminder that the omnibus meeting is coming up on January 15th where all the three town councils and the school committee get together. And, um, mainly the reminder is just whatever it is you'd like to add to the agenda, we'll have it on the next council meeting and, and we can, um, discuss whatever it is we want on the agenda and set it off to the school. Uh, town manager's report, Bill?
Thank you. Uh, just very briefly, on October 15th, I met with Tim Minacio. He's the, uh, new hazard mitigation coordinator for the Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency. Uh, we met at the Crandall House and we reviewed several of the past, present, and future FEMA grants. We also responded to Salt Drive where the drainage improvement work is scheduled to be completed pending approval of the town's grant application addendum by FEMA.
Questions for the manager? Bill, do you know when, um, they might be ruling on that, our request?
Well, that's a good question. I think the, uh, the federal shutdown of 16 days kind of set that back also. Uh, but they told us, uh, the last I heard was late October, early November. So as, as the days go on, it becomes more and more likely that it'll probably be a spring project. But we have executed an agreement with the low bidder, uh, and his contract with us expired. It was only good for 60 days, it expired on the 13th. We extended that for another two months just in case that, you know, we get a, the green light from FEMA, so. We're just waiting for them and we, we have made several contacts, requests through Rhode Island EMA, uh, to pull a bit of pressure on FEMA to get them to act, but so far, we haven't had much success.
Bill, don't the asphalt plants close in November?
December 15th, I believe.
December 15th, is it? Okay.
Yeah.
Is it possible, is it possible we could get, if everything came in tomorrow, that we need it, is it possible we could get the project done by that point so we could put asphalt down before the 15th of December?
Oh, we've talked about that, and that's a very good point. Uh, it is possible to get the job done this year if we get the green light in a very short period of time, but in all probability, we might not be able to asphalt it. We might have to put like gravel down, uh, and then do the asphalting in the spring just to get that, at least that will eliminate the water problem down there.
Right.
Uh, but it depends on, you know, the FEMA acting on that addendum.
Bill, how big a section is it of the road that we're talking about, you know, this way? Not across the road, obviously, but we talk about 15 feet, 20 feet?
Uh...
The reason why I ask that because if you put gravel down and all of a sudden we get, we get snow, we get rain, and we get ice, it could be a real, you know, a real problem in that regard for plowing, for travel over it.
I mean, I'm not sure, just that even though the gravel would be down there, it's not as good as having asphalt.
Right.
But I think it's better than having 18 inches of ice on the road.
Oh, yeah.
Right, because that would be the alternative.
Yeah, so, uh, there's no easy answer. In all probability, what will happen is that by the time we get the green light from them, uh, it'll turn out to be a spring project.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, new business, uh, we have canyon earth removal registration. This is their second year, so it's a renewal. And it's got all the approvals in here from the various departments.
I'd like to make a motion to approve canyon earth removal registrations, renewal application.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I actually have none.
I, uh, he's not here tonight, but if he was here, I would tell, um, the owners that, um, we have good businesses in town, and this is certainly one of them, and he jumped right on this and he got it done, and here he is again, and right on time.
And he's got everything on file.
He's a good business.
Everything is on file, everything is accomplished.
Mm-hmm.
There's just no arguments, he's just, he was a really wonderful...
They're our poster child.
They are, they really are. The first ones that came along.
And have done it right all along.
Mm-hmm. Yep, it's, it's wonderful. All right, next up, uh, status of the historic cemetery accounts, counselor?
Do we have to approve that?
I'm sorry.
Do we have to approve that?
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't vote, did we? Oh, I'm gabbling along. Thank you very much. Good catch. And somebody would have figured that out eventually, I hope. Um, we have a motion on the floor, um, to do the renewal for canyon earth removal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next up, cemetery accounts.
Madam President, uh, this is, uh, probably be, should be revisited, but I have several comments. Uh, to give you a little background, in, uh, recently, work was done at a cemetery and there was not sufficient funds to pay this person. Uh, and I think that the council, if you look at all these, uh, accounts, they were deeded, they don't really deed it, but they were given with a certain amount of money to the co, to the town council to, uh, to maintain these cemeteries. And a lot of these amounts were really small amounts, maybe big amounts in, in the days they were done, some were in 1800, some were other, you know, really part of the 20th century. Uh, and if you examine the, uh, the different funds, they, they, they have quite a, all over the place balances, uh, and as you know, that just the situation recently with the Thurston thing, with that, was really phenomenally expensive, so even if you pay somebody just to mow the lawn or maybe remove brush, you're dealing with some serious money, so I don't, I do have concerns about the future of these cemeteries. One thing I don't know, uh, I will say before I read my list, is I don't know everybody that takes care of all these individual cemeteries, whether or not we, we have somebody in particular that takes care of these cemeteries. And, uh, I know there, uh, Richard Prescott wrote the cemetery book, and of course, I want to acknowledge Deputy Town Clerk Lorraine Tocatara Ruda and Gail Wade, who are the co-authors, so, very fine cemetery book. Uh, but, uh, the reason I think that at the minimum, I think the council has an obligation to send a letter to anybody that we know traditionally takes care of these cemeteries and submits a bill to the town, that the town is not going to pay them unless there's money in that account. And...
Well, you want to be careful about that because we don't have an obligation to pay anybody anything. We don't, we don't even have an obligation to pay them if there's money available in the funds, if we don't, um, feel it's appropriate. So the, the only thing the town agreed to do by taking the funds is to be custodian for the funds, not to take care of the property itself. We agreed to be custodian for the funds, that's it. And you need to be careful and walk that line between being a good custodian of the funds and being, and acting like you own the property, which you don't. So just be cautious, that's all.
Mike, I, I want to go through my list, but if another council wants to respond, but I'd like...
No, well, go ahead.
Yes, I do, yes.
No, we'll wait until he's finished.
If Barbara wants to jump ahead of me, I got several...
Well, actually, I was gonna go to Lorraine, Lori, when you finish.
Okay.
Because she could give us some of the questions you brought up and who's maintaining these cemeteries, and I know you went in and cleaned them up, too.
I know, uh, one time John Wilcox did, but he's deceased because he used to send us a bill. My, uh, my talking points, my bullet points of the bearing money, the town's responsibility, and solicitor pretty much addressed that. Future finances, if you look at just the cost, uh, the cost for moving trees, if we're worried about damaging cemetery stones, we're dealing with very serious money. Uh, upkeep, I know in some towns, the public works department does cemeteries. I know in Stannington, they do some work on the Wicked Park Burial Ground, and I usually go to the annual meeting and I'm a descendant of the founders of Stannington. Uh, also, what is the future of private groups such as the Hopkinan Historical Association, the Boy Scouts, and other groups? Also, uh, you know, cemeteries that are like abandoned, and, uh, so, uh, the people involved with upkeep, and also, I'm also, uh, from a legal point of view, I'm also interested in insurance liability.
We don't own it, we don't have any insurance.
Okay. Okay, thank you, I have no further comment at this time.
Lori, would you like to fill us in?
Um, I do know that some of them are...
At the microphone there. Oh, at the microphone, how about, pull that over, there you go. Make sure you get picked up.
Um, I do know that, um, some of them are being taken care of free of charge.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the Benjamin Kenyon Fund and the Mary Sunderland Fund, uh, that's lot number five, and John Wilcox used to take care of that, he has passed on, and his son Bruce Wilcox takes care of that. And we never hear from Bruce to ask us for any funds, um, any reimbursement for gasoline or anything. Let me just go down the line here.
Okay.
The James Brown Fund, uh, that cemetery is very, very deep in the woods. It was very hard for us to get equipment up there. It's a good mile walk through the woods.
Which one is that one? The very first one?
Very first one.
Oh, okay.
Uh, the Annette Champlin one is Cemetery Seven, um, and Brian Santaire takes care of that one. Alfred Collins Fund, that's Cemetery 14. Um, that's right on Woodville Alton Road, you can, you can see it from the road.
Who takes care of that?
Nobody, really. Um, every once in a while, we'll go by and it's all cleaned up. We don't know who did it.
Oh, so, oh, wait, that sounds like Mr., well, we're gonna have you come up after Lori, okay? And you can fill in, fill in what you need to.
Fill in on that one.
Okay, good.
Okay. Uh, the Nicholas Crandall Fund, uh, that is in Cemetery Six, which is the Rockville Cemetery, and someone mows that, so they mow the whole entire cemetery. Um, the Elizabeth J. Hoxey Fund, that's number 10, Michael Hoxey takes care of that one, and he does it free of charge because that is all his relatives. The John Hoxey Fund, that's Cemetery 24, um, I do not know who takes care of that, if at all. And the Benjamin Kenyon Fund, I've gone through, that was lot number five. Uh, the Elmer Kenyon Fund, that is in the Rockville Cemetery, that is also mowed. And the Peter Palmer Fund, uh, Brian Santaire takes care of that. The Mary Kay Sunderland Fund is in lot number five. The William Taylor Fund for John Palmer, that is in the Rockville Cemetery, they just mow everything. Um, and the Benjamin Thurston is number 17, and we all know about that.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's what I can tell you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prescott, you have more?
Not a whole lot, okay. Richard Prescott, from the Hopkinan Historical District Commission and from the Hopkinan Historical Association. Uh, you'd mentioned the Alfred Collins Fund, and last winter, but with the snow, a bunch of trees went down, and somebody, and I don't know who, uh, cut them up and, uh, HHA came along and piled the brush out so it would be accessible. And actually, I called, uh, Mr. McGary, who had, uh, the DPW folks, guys come down and, and remove the brush that I had, that we had moved out front. A couple of times, I've mowed that, another time, uh, people who adopted it, and they were from Coventry, and they had cleaned it up. So, because it's right there, people see it, and, uh, we've been lucky that that has been taken care of. And it's, it so happens that that is the best funded of all, and most of the work has been done free for nothing. Uh, I was, I had Lori and, uh, Gail's book, and I was trying to sort those cemeteries out, so I took notes when, when Lori was speaking, because I found it very confusing. Especially, you know, a number of those, this, funds were set up for private lots within Rockville Cemetery, I think there are four of them. So, I don't know who manages the upkeep of Rockville Cemetery. Uh, but I bet they'd like to have more money than they have to work with for gasoline and so forth to do it, and, and there's money that hasn't been touched. I think that's something that should be looked at, uh, for the benefit of maintaining that law ongoing. It's, it's a shame to see money just sitting here not being used when people are actually doing that. Uh, and I, it may even be on a volunteer basis, I don't know. One of the things about trying to figure out which of these funds went with which cemetery is that the funds were set up by a, a person on behalf of a deceased person who was buried there, not necessarily the person that was, the person setting up the fund weren't dead yet, so they probably got buried somewhere else. Uh, so, but Lori, uh, gave me a few that I had missed, like number five of Mary Sunderland, I couldn't find her name anywhere. I guess one of the questions, uh, one of the things that the Historic District Commission is supposed to be doing, uh, is setting up, uh, some kind of a, submitting a proposal to maintain cemeteries. Not that we have charge of them, but to know what condition they are in and so forth. And I really didn't know all of this list at all. So I'd like to see a way that, number one, we could find out who the people are their living relatives who we could connect with, uh, make them aware of funds, somebody should be making them aware of how many funds are, how much is available to maintain, uh, and somebody should also be, uh, looking at the cemeteries, uh, feet on the ground to see if work is being done. Uh, and as the Historic District Commission is sort of in charge of looking at cemeteries and coming up with some kind of a maintenance program, uh, so according to the comprehensive plan, that was kind of written into that, stone wall still for that matter. Uh, so, I don't know what can be done to bring forward a plan that would, uh, meet those needs, but, uh, I guess the Historic District Commission stands ready to...
Well, it, it needn't be complex. Um, it could be as simple as having your list, knowing that it is being done, even if you don't know who's doing it. The point is, it is being done. You have a start here, you have this information, but I would like to also suggest, though, that, um, from a person of volunteer lot, um, I wouldn't, um, want to, um, broadcast that there's some money, even if it's only $200. If people are doing it for free, I think that's wonderful.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't need to, I think these funds, um, should hopefully stay there and grow, and when something really comes up, like the tree and something serious, maybe you need to tap into the money. But if people are mowing the lawn and taking care of, of it, I think it's wonderful, and they're not asking for money, good. I don't want to encourage them to. Something to think about.
One, there are only 12 of these?
Is that right?
Yeah, there's...
And most of them are, and four of them in Rockville Cemetery are just...
It's interesting, yeah.
Family plots within the cemetery. But there are 80-some cemeteries out there in the hinterland.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I've, well, that, we do need strong bodies and good clippers to get folks out there to, to do that.
Yeah, but the media problem for the town is that, uh, our pre, uh, our predecessors, previous town councils accepted by votes of the council to maintain funds. These are the cemeteries that we have...
When I was reading the past council minutes, I noticed there were, laws were quoted when the petitioner came forward. Uh, I'd like to find out something what, about those laws that were quoted and what did they mean and so forth. Uh, I wonder if our legal counsel could look into that?
Sure.
That would be handy, uh, because...
Barbara, you had something?
Yeah, I have several.
Um, can you stay right there?
I can, I can stay here.
I actually have a number of questions about it, about the perpetual care accounts. When we have 12 of them, and so, my very first question is, do we wish to encourage this to continue, especially as a number of these are single lots within a larger cemetery that is being cared for as a, as a large cemetery? I mean, I think we need to talk about this, you know, obviously not make the decisions today, but I really want to know if we want to encourage this to continue, because these accounts are from, some of them 100 years ago, uh, some of them 70, 80, 90 years ago. And the money, $200 was a lot then, but even if they raised their monies to 500 or 800, it simply will not take care of a masonry wall or a tree. There is nothing in these funds other than mowing and weed whacking and clipping that we can do a lot with as far as substantial work. So my first question is, do we even want to encourage this to continue, uh, and especially as a single lot within a larger cemetery? Uh, we obviously now know what funds are available, but we need to know where the funds should be accessed, how they should be accessed, who is actually running the funds, because originally, obviously, it went through the town clerk, but that was when they had no treasurer or no finance department. So, does it go through finance? Does it go through the clerk? Um, how do we do this in the 21st century? Um, and they are written for the well-being and the taking care of the lot, whatever lot it is, or whatever cemetery it is. So if someone takes care of it and says, "I did this, I can prove it, here are my receipts," I don't see how we can say, "We won't pay you" when indeed, the document says it is specifically to do the following things to take care of the cemetery lot. And if someone comes forward and has it, then I assume we pay them. I think that was a problem certainly with Mr. Santaire. Um, the funds are not there, the family is not happy about it because they didn't give him permission for that either. We don't know who gives permission or doesn't give permission, we have no way of resolving it well. So I think there are things we need to do, because it's a charming thing for a rural town to do, but with four of them in Rockville Cemetery, when it's actually a cemetery and these are individual lots, I mean, I can get my lot over in Oak Grove Cemetery and say, "Well, I'm giving you $200 and you're gonna take care of it for the rest of, forever." I'm not sure if that's as appropriate anymore because the money is not useful. And I do like the fact that people volunteer, but I see no reason why we couldn't pay for their gas or their weed, weed wax string. Um, I think we should be open to do that, certainly not to pay them by the hour or something like that may be unacceptable unless the fund wishes to, there's people who, whose , uh, family is that fund. So I actually have a lot of questions about it that I think we need to look at, so we can make, uh, some kind of decision on how this is accessed, you know, reasonably, so we don't have some of the problems we've had before. And I don't know where it should, I don't, I actually don't have a particular opinion on where or how we should do it, but that we should look into it so we can see whether Lori goes out and weed whacks and just has to replace a string, maybe not the weed whacker, or Mr. Prescott and his group go out and, and mow the lawn, but then they break their lawnmower, or not, and they need gas anyway. I mean, I think we should address some of that. I know we're not liable, you know, Pat has made it abundantly clear, but we are responsible for these monies, and most of the monies won't do very much. So it's kind of like tiny little accounts that the town holds that we really can't function, they can't be functional accounts.
Let's see.
You have something else to add?
First of all...
Oh, I'm sorry, Dave, did you count something?
Just got one.
Go ahead.
Two things quickly.
Two things quickly. We need to identify whether or not we should have the people that traditionally have been healing the cemeteries, these cemeteries, whether they should continue to do that, or we should possibly use a public works on things that are accessible, if that's a possibility.
We're not responsible for maintenance. We're responsible for the funds. Public Works is not going to be used.
No, and there are eighty cemeteries, so let's not get Public Works involved yet.
Well, these are, we're just talking about the cemeteries we were given responsibility for. The other thing is, as far as people doing any work, should we send a notice that they should check with the town before they do expect reimbursement, the people that have traditionally done that?
Well, there's only one guy.
Yeah, that's right.
And he knows.
Right.
Okay.
And it is kind of all those people to do it, volunteer. I think it's enormous kindness and certainly of great value to the town.
Are you all set?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Dave, do you have something, Dan?
Yeah, a couple of things. So, we're responsible for the funds.
For administering the funds.
For administering the funds.
Yep.
And so, we determine whether, we determine whether the lawns are going to be cut, whether the branches are going to be cut, or the maintenance is going to be done.
Well, you decide what's going to get paid for.
Right, what's going to get paid for.
You don't decide what's done. You decide what's going to get paid.
So, so, does Mr. Santier, does Mr. Santier come into the town clerk? I don't understand how he gets to cut these things.
He submitted, he said, over the years, I've seen them for years, every now and then, he would submit a bill for mowing or something.
Does he check with us first and us?
No, no. Like, once, every two years or something. It wasn't very often, but he would submit a bill.
And we determine whether we're going to pay him or not, which we normally do, right? And so, the town clerk authorizes?
No, she puts it on, it comes to us, and we decide whether to authorize payment.
The town council authorizes the payment of that bill to him?
Yes.
Okay. A small question. And the Thurston Fund, I understand that we, when we discussed the situation with the tree in Thurston Cemetery, that we couldn't go down below the 200, initial 200?
Good question, actually. I looked at that today, Dave, because I was interested in that.
Well, yeah.
Two of these accounts, the Elizabeth Hoxsey Fund and the Thurston Fund.
Yeah.
Both have provisions, when the council accepted the funds.
Yeah.
Both have provisions that the principal cannot be touched.
Okay.
The balance of them, all of the others, do not have that provision. So, all of the others don't limit, you know, the principal and those could be spent down to nothing if the council determined that that was appropriate.
What about the Champlin Fund, the second one? The one that moved from 300 to 500?
There's no, I didn't see anything, Barbara, and I asked Lisa to put together for me the documents from when the council accepted each of these funds.
Right.
And the only two I saw that had that no principal were just that Elizabeth Hoxsey and the Thurston Fund.
Check the Champlin, because when I read it, it seemed to me like they said, "We want, instead of the principal to be 300, they want it to be 5," and of course, then we went under it, so.
Well, because they added to it, I think, to bring it to the 5.
Right, exactly, exactly.
But it doesn't say, there's no specific provision that I saw that said it can't go below a certain amount.
Okay.
So, basically, two out of these.
That's one.
Maybe this one that Barbara's.
Because I note here that several of the funds are down to 60, one's down to $68, and another one's down to a couple bucks, 41. So, and that's why I asked that question, because obviously.
Those are okay, as near as I can.
Okay. So, I guess the only other question I have is, I may be opening Pandora's Box here to a certain extent, so that anybody, Scott, for example, could go to a cemetery, performs a maintenance on one of these cemeteries, and then submit a bill to the council. Am I correct in that regard?
And say, "I want to get paid for it," and then you would decide whether or not it was appropriate to pay it.
And who determines whether he's done, Scott has done the mowing or the?
The council.
We have to actually go to the, we go to the cemetery?
It's up to the council to figure it out.
We send somebody else?
No, it's up to the council to decide what to do.
Okay.
It's never been an issue.
Yeah.
It's never been an issue. Bill gets paid, and he drives by and sees that it gets done.
Right.
You know, so.
Okay.
It's not complicated.
Okay. Good, I'm good.
The thing that's really a Pandora's Box is, if you read these, a lot were put in charge of washing trust, and apparently, there's bank fees that were being charged.
Right, I see that.
Trying to be worked out.
Well, that's going to be.
Lisa's working on that, though. That's actually a good argument when the time comes that you take it up for transferring these funds out of, you know, the clerk's office into finance, now that there's a finance department, because the finance department works so closely with the banks, you know, on the town's accounts and stuff, and it's probably, because of their working relationship with the banks and their knowledge of that stuff, it's probably a better place to have this, these kinds of accounts where they can be overseen, you know? The council, these funds were left in the care of the council, not the town clerk's office or the council can make the determination about where they want the funds to reside and who to be responsible for. So, when that comes up, you can have that thought.
How can we also determine whether lots will be accepted, let alone cemeteries?
What do you mean?
Well, there's Lot 11 and Lot 33. These are in Rockville Cemetery. There's another lot in Rockville Cemetery.
Can you explain your question?
Yeah. It's that someone is setting aside money for perpetual care for a lot in a cemetery that is already, has an association and is already being taken care of. Why are we holding money for a particular lot, a single person, when indeed, the cemetery is an association of the people who bought the lot?
Because they asked us to at one time.
Well, I know, but I'm wondering if that needs to be continued.
Of course.
I don't know if it's a course.
I say it's a course.
When the money was accepted, you agreed to, basically. I don't know how you really.
But you have to continue.
Something may happen someday, and you need the money. I mean, why would we do something different with the money?
And it'd be a question of who to return it to. Barbara, you know, it's a question of that.
Well, my question is, do we need to have it continue? Not that account continues, but somebody comes up tomorrow and says, "I want..."
But nobody's done it in how long?
Well, exactly. Someone could. We want to take on a single lot in a large.
And you could say no, actually, Barbara, you know, at the time when that's presented, because it's presented to you as a request, and the council has to vote to take it on. So, if somebody tried to do that today, you could look at it and say, "You know, it's just not the best idea," or whatever it is, and decide not to take it.
I don't know. What if a stone gets it damaged? Something could happen, and you'd have some money there to take care of it, but if it's all being mowed, or a volunteer's doing it, I think it's wonderful.
Vandal's could knock over the stone, and the cemetery may say, "We don't have the money to put all these stones up."
We can't deal with that. You got them.
But you're giving money to the town council, town hall, the municipality, to run that money for you for 100 years, 200 years?
A thousand years.
Yeah, but I mean, it seems to me, it's another thing on top of finance, that this hasn't been done since 1935.
I think we just spent more time on this tonight than has ever been spent on it by any department head.
I agree.
So, what's the problem? I think our problem's solved. All the things that have been brought up, the historic district commission, or association, excuse me, is in the comprehensive plan suggesting, and you've accepted, to come up with a plan.
The district commission.
And I think that's the plan.
Not the association.
That's who will come up with this, and if there's anything you want us to know, you'll let us know, and you'll come up with a plan, and I think that's where it belongs, not with us. We just, we just say yes or no when money goes out. But you guys are going to actually come up with a plan. I think that's great.
I think we do need to come up with where it's handled.
And you're on the board of them, so you can help them come up with a plan. I think that's great.
But the part that's on the town is, do we put it through finance or through town clerk?
No, I think, I think she had a good suggestion, and Bill, can we remember to make sure that we put this on for the budgetary workshops, somewhere along there, and then we could discuss it and just say, "Yes, it belongs to the finance."
To finance department.
And just, because it's not really on, could we decide it tonight?
No.
No, I didn't think it was really on the agenda, so.
But if we could.
We could have it on the agenda, just to ask the finance take it over.
I think it was general consensus that we would put it on a future agenda.
Oh, okay, fine.
Because, I mean, finance's role here, and the town's role is just, you know, fiduciary responsibility as to overseeing those funds. It's not town property, and we really shouldn't get involved in who cuts it and who doesn't cut it, and it poses fiduciary responsibility. But I agree with the Solicitor in that it probably should go, and I don't think the town clerk's office could check, but because it's financial, if it's money in the custody of the town, it probably shouldn't be under the jurisdiction of the finance laws.
Okay. Yeah, on some agenda. We'll let you and Frank figure out which one, whether it's a workshop or a regular council meeting. Okay. Are we all set? Thank you for coming tonight. Next on the agenda, we need to think about scheduling another special council meeting for interviews for boards and commissions.
I, for Monday nights, I think we should try to reserve Monday nights for council, so on a Monday night that we don't have a regular council meeting.
I've got a question for Laurie. There was a letter that was, or form, for instance, the Board of Canvases, there's a letter that's going to go out to the Republican in Town Committee and Democratic Town Committee to, for a selection, for a board and commission. So, we need to give them time. I was going to suggest, we need to give them time to submit the names, because we may want to interview some of them. So, I was going to suggest we not have this meeting too fast. Give them time to do it. And I don't, do we want to look to November?
You can just look up here, November.
I know the 25th, for instance, that's Thanksgiving week, but that's not a council meeting night, November 25th. It's a Monday. It would, we have our normal meetings on the 4th and the 18th, and the following 25th is free. Do we want to do it that night?
It's Friday.
Is that good? Okay, because Frank said Mondays were Friday.
Twenty-fifth.
Okay, so we'll do that 25th.
Monday 25th, November.
Yep, 7:00 PM?
Yep.
Oh, can we do it earlier?
6:30 then.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. All right, next up, boards and commissions, we need to accept Robert Corrigan's resignation from the Board of Canvases.
I need a motion to accept Mr. Corrigan's resignation from the Board of Canvases with regret.
Second.
Second. Any comment from anyone?
He's worked so hard and long. He's really been a great human being that has been really working on that Board of Canvases for, I don't even know how long, it's over a decade, I think. But he's really been hardworking and loyal and faithful and there consistently. So, I really am sorry that he is resigning, but everyone needs to retire at some point.
Everybody gets tired.
Yeah, understandable.
Yeah, he was on the council, I think, the first time in 1988. That might have been his first time. It might have been earlier, but I know he was on from '88. He was in '90, '92, '94, I think. And then, and then again, so I don't know, he's six or seven terms, he served on the council, he did this, and maybe a few other things in town? I don't know. He's just been active in the town since the late '80s. So, we appreciate that very much. He spearheaded a lot, lots of things, like the Public Works, becoming a Public Works and not a Highway Department anymore, things like that, so. Yeah, he's been an asset. Hopefully, there'll be something that will get him, and he'll come back for some reason to do something for us. Any other comment?
All I can say is, I think Sophie and I, as the only members of the council, that share with Bob as a council member.
Yeah, I guess that's true.
Yeah, because I think he was on the council. I think I was on the council with him.
Yeah, I think so. All in favor? Aye. The last public forum? Glad it was me. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Is there anybody have any comment? Nope. Okay. All in favor?